We'll start with the pledge. I invite everyone to join me. Okay. I will open the meeting with public comment. If anyone has any comments they'd like to make before we begin our discussion tonight, I invite you to do so now.
[inaudible]
Sorry?
No.
Oh, no. Moving on to consent items. First item is to vote to accept the resignation of Town Manager Andrew Mailer.
Move that Board of Selectmen accept the resignation of Town Manager Andrew Mailer, effective February 17, 2019.
Second.
And authorize.
Oh, and I'd like to also authorize, sorry, authorize the chair to, yeah, to enter into discussion with the Town Manager for post-resignation services.
Again, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Question passes.
[inaudible].
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. So now we will move into a discussion regarding the process for hiring a new Town Manager. The first item, I have asked Jim Zanakis to join us tonight to give us a report from the previous screening committee. So Jim served as the chairman for the screening committee that resulted in the hiring of Town Manager Mailer, and I thought it would be helpful to hear from him some lessons learned and how they carried that process.
Were you eight when you were in the [inaudible]?
Pretty young.
Thanks, Jim, for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you Chairman Keenan, members of the Board of Selectmen. So by way of background, when the town hired Mark Reese about 18, 19 years ago, I was chairman of the Board of Selectmen at the time, and we used the same process to hire Mark Reese as it was to hire Andrew Mailer. So I think that the process has produced two pretty good candidates. So I would suggest that maybe it's worth considering doing again for the next Town Manager for North Andover. In previous years, I think there was an idea that the committee should be large and represent a lot of different people from the town. And what ended up happening was in previous searches going back before Mark Reese is that only people with a vested interest were interested in helping to make the selection. So in the search in 2000 that yielded Mark Reese's candidacy, each selectman appointed one member to a committee, and the same thing happened in 2011 when Mr. Mailer was brought on board as well. So loosely, I think the Board has some discretion as to how you make your selections for that appointment. Each member gets one appointment historically. We tried to, when I was on the Board of Selectmen, we tried to stay clear of people who had a vested interest in town politics, either, you know, through an elected or appointed job. Anyone that, you know, has anything closer than arm's length maybe would have been a little bit too close for comfort. So there was some consideration for that. The subsequent Board of Selectmen, I don't know if they discussed that in great detail. With the assistance of the Human Resources Director, the town also hired a consultant in both occasions. It was Tom Gru and Associates. I just looked up yesterday online. I couldn't find much about him. I'm not sure if he's still practicing or not. The process was basically to advertise in trade publications, and I think in both instances yielded approximately 40 or 45 resumes that were qualified by the search committee to see who was worthy of interviewing. The search committee met with the Board of Selectmen and was able to gauge what the priorities were from the Board of Selectmen. And if I recall, they were very similar directions from both Boards of Selectmen to hire someone that had great financial wherewithal, that could help guide North Andover to better financial prospects. So I think those of us who were in the town 20 years ago realized that North Andover was not on the best financial footing prior to that. So clearly, looking at the bond ratings, I think a job well done for Mr. Mailer and Mr. Reese. So the consultant and the Human Resources Director were great assets in helping the search committee understand guidelines and rules and laws relative to open meeting laws and confidentiality. We met on a few occasions to qualify the resumes, decide who we wanted to speak to in person. We conducted one round of interviews with the candidates, and then we handed the process back over to the Board of Selectmen. In neither instance did the search committee make a recommendation. You just pass off the list of candidates and say, here you go. There was clearly a particular danger in having the committee making recommendations given that the ultimate decision lies with the Board of Selectmen. What else did I want to say? Questions? What else we talk about? I think-
Maybe a bit about the timeline.
The timeline was actually pretty quick and easy. In the instance with Mark Reese, there was a short lag, and because I was chairman at the time, I served as acting Town Manager for two weeks in between our acting Town Manager leaving and Mark Reese coming on board. It was just for formalities and signatures on various papers. The timeline, I think, to advertise in the trade publications was maybe 30 or 45 days. The search committee got to work right away and reviewed the resumes, and interviews were set up within a couple of weeks. And then from when we handed it off to the Board of Selectmen, I would probably say the two people here that were part of the process, I think it was maybe just a couple of weeks before they had a final recommendation and agreement on an employment contract. So aggressively, it can be done pretty quickly, but, you know, it's not something that should be rushed, and, you know, obviously, I know the Board would make the right decision to make the process as, take as long as it needs to, to find a third qualified candidate.
Just as you were speaking, one of the things that came to mind, did, wasn't there an understanding that if all five could not meet, they would postpone for another day or something that you want-
Of the screening committee?
Yes.
I don't, I would think so.
Because you don't want somebody to not be part, you know, be part of it that-
There's only five.
Right. No, I don't think, I don't think anyone would have wanted to meet unless all five members of the screening committee were represented.
I thought I remembered that.
It would put the fifth selectman at a disadvantage for not having their appointee represented at the meeting.
But if I remember correctly, everybody worked, you know, on a pretty aggressive schedule. I mean, you met frequently to get the job done.
Yep.
And is that your recollection as well?
Yep. There was never anyone not present at any of the meetings. It was important that everyone be there and provide their feedback. The services of the consultant that was hired, I found in both instances to be a little bit unnecessary for the cost that it put on the town of North Andover in both instances. It was a pleasure to work with the gentleman who helped, but I think that the role of the search committee is to duplicate those efforts anyway. And there was no recruiting done. I don't think he provided any resumes that were not already coming in. In other words, he didn't add any value in attracting additional candidates that weren't already applying. That was a question that I asked specifically of him, so, to see what his connections could yield.
Why do you think that was? Why do you think the consultant didn't add value? I mean, wouldn't that be in the scope of what, you know, the scope of services that we would be contracting for?
So I think, I would think so. He was more a facilitator than a recruiter. So he facilitated the process for us, informed us of certain obligations that we had and how to structure an interview so that it was fair and, you know, the best way to conduct these types of interviews. He informed us on matters of confidentiality and things like that. But I don't know that his scope of resources was great enough to go to other communities and say, hey, I really want you to apply for this job, to go attract the best and the brightest. I don't think in either instance he recruited a single candidate for the job. That's not to say that a different consultant might yield better results, but typically for a town like North Andover, it's a pretty good gig to get if you're, you know, looking for a job like this. Those candidates are aware that there's an opening now, and, you know, elsewhere with Massachusetts municipal experience, chances are they're going to apply. Again, my experience in both instances is limited to the same consultant, who was great at helping to facilitate, but I think that that's a job that the chairman of the committee or a designate from the town could accomplish that same effort without spending tens of thousands of dollars.
I think you would agree, though, that you do need someone to keep everybody, you know, moving along and being organized, making sure at every meeting all the necessary paperwork was in order. I mean, you really-
A lot of that, the consultant, the last time around was living in Cape Cod. A lot of that fell to myself with the assistance of the Human Resources Director, who was a valuable asset in communicating and setting up logistics and things like that.
Yeah, because that's, to me, just keeping everybody on task, on time, and not depending on private citizens to be doing all of that all by themselves. That's the biggest piece, I think.
You need to be very clear with the scope of what is expected and hold that consultant to those expectations. I wouldn't expect, you know, the chair of the search committee to be doing the role of the consultant when we're paying the consultant. I mean, they should be focusing on reviewing the resumes and finding those. One question I have, what was the number of candidates that you ended up, because I wasn't here at the time, that you ended up presenting to the Board of Selectmen in both instances back when Mark was hired and when Andrew was hired?
Mr. Stewart's telling me that there were three candidates that were-
I saw that.
Sent from the search committee to the Board of Selectmen. There might have been four with one that dropped out.
There was four when I applied.
And one dropout.
And I don't know if the Board didn't advance the fourth. If my memory is not correct, Jim, but I don't remember at the time if the fourth withdrew or there was some complications with the fourth and the Board chose when they saw the four to only interview three. I think it's the latter. The Board chose to interview three.
My recollection was that there was three, but it could have been because of what you just described. I mean, we have another selectman here. It was three.
It was four, and then the Board chose to interview three.
That's right.
I would also encourage the Board, if you do hire a consultant, to put a non-compete clause in that contract. It was a little aggravating when I realized that Mark Reese was trying to be poached by the same consultant that brought him, you know, that was part of the search committee to bring him. So a five-year non-compete to say that you're not going to try to poach our candidate that we hire.
Well, they came back after him after-
The gentleman who was, the gentleman who the town hired in 2000, a few years later tried to recruit Mark to go back to work in Framingham.
So, I mean, really what you're talking about, there are two different, there are two components to this. Recruiting and consulting to have the best process and help us with the solution. And I think that there's not as much focus on the recruiting right now, given kind of where we're at. Where we're at, I think we certainly need to discuss this here, but it, I think, to the point of having a consultant who makes sure that the process has integrity, leverages the expertise of the people there, and we feel provides the level of information to us kind of rolling forward. I think that makes sense. I think that, you know, to your question, Selectman Valencourt, the role of a recruiter, you know, is, may be a different function, and really take a look at what services we want, what services we want to pay for, if that's actually à la carte. And I don't know anything about that, but, but point well taken.
That's exactly the point.
You hired a recruiter who also consulted.
Now, keep in mind, too, the process to hire Mark Reese, that's when the recruiting business, I was actually working as a recruiter at the time in the tech industry, and that's when recruiters were far more relevant to the job application process. And now with so many more tools available, you know, I don't think North Andover will have any difficulty whatsoever in finding a very attractive pool of candidates.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it, Jim.
Good job, Jim. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jim?
No, it's great.
Okay.
You've come in and-
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
And thank you to your assistant over here, too, for reminding you of certain things.
Andrew, I was 19 when I was elected.
Yes, I was 19.
20 years ago.
So I didn't call this out on the agenda, but before we move to a discussion on the use of a recruiter, I did also talk to D. Casey, sorry to put you on the spot, D. But I, D. is obviously overseeing our HR function, among other things, now, and I had an opportunity to speak with her a bit before our meeting on her experience working with recruiters. So if I might put her on the spot and ask her to share a few words about that experience, just also for us to have his input as we discuss the use of one.
So I see three main advantages to using a consultant. The first would be efficiency. Staff have other resources, so your consultant would be dedicated to the project and be held to the guidelines and the deadlines that the Board sets for him or her. Experience, having conducted other municipal CEO searches, the consultant will know which assessments to recommend to use, and also from where to attract the best candidates. There have been many retirements, as Megan and I both know, and so there are a lot of candidates out there, and there are a lot of firms, there are more firms, I think, now doing this type of work. So they will know kind of who is out there in terms of the pool and which assessments work for a community like North Andover. And also objectivity. Some staff members are likely to know candidates through either our professional associations. We've worked on governor's councils together before. So if an external consultant manages the process, there's less of a likelihood that there could be any appearances of favoritism amongst the internal staff. So I see that there are a few major advantages to using a consultant versus internal staff. That's not saying anything against any of the depth of the internal staff to do the work.
Who would you say, like, the big three in this area? I'm just going to pick a number because usually it's the big three. Who would be the three consulting firms that you would pop into your mind right away as ones that are often used for this process?
Sure. So in speaking to my colleagues that have gone through executive searches recently, MRI Consulting Group, they are out of New Hampshire. They also do a lot of public safety work. Bernie Lynch, he is now the primary consultant of Paradigm Consulting, I believe is the name of his firm, longtime municipal manager. Mark Morse of MMA Consulting Group also does a lot of work in public safety, but also does executive searches, CEO searches. And the other that I know of, that I've had peers that have used this, is the Collins Center at UMass Boston. So those are the four. I have not, I've worked personally with all of them. I have not worked with Mr. Gru in my 20-year career, so I can't speak to what he would bring to the table if we were to use him now.
Okay. So I guess we can move into the discussion on the first item on our, or the next item on the agenda, which was to vote on whether or not to hire a municipal management recruitment I will, I guess, kick off the discussion with saying that I personally think it would be valuable to do that. I respectfully take under consideration the form, the previous experience of it not necessarily being that helpful, but I think the point that Ms. Casey raised of objectivity is very important. So I like that it brings that, that, the appearance even about, not that I think anyone in our staff wouldn't be objective, but for the appearance of objectivity. And it seems to be a best practice based on my research around looking at what other towns have done. Other towns all seem to use one. And for me, it seems as though, you know, while it might be $10,000 or $15,000, in the scheme of things, that's not that much when this is the single biggest decision we have to make, and we're obviously going to not be spending money on Andrew's salary. So we have, we have some money to spend, so.
Well, it was in the health.
I guess I don't think it's, I think it's worth spending, spending the money, given the importance of the decision, and I think Ms. Casey laid out some good reasons why we should have one.
I agree with you, but I would also add to it that due to the timeline, we can't be wasting a lot of time getting ourselves organized. We need someone to hit the ground running and getting us to where we need to be. As we've just discussed, Mr. Mailer will be leaving fairly quickly, and we're working on some alternative plans to keep things moving smoothly. But, yeah, it's a pretty aggressive timeline. Town meeting coming, we really, we can't be just trying to figure it out ourselves when someone already knows how to do it. You're right, for that amount of money, we could justify.
I actually think that's a very important point, that with the timeline, that we really want to have someone or a firm that's going to really help us get going right away in the background running. So, yeah, I think that's a very important point, along with the process and everything else.
And thank you, thank you for really making some really strong points and being really prepared with this information, so we appreciate that.
I also dropped it out, kind of a timeline, that I would envision if we were to use a consultant. This evening, you would make a decision in which direction that we're going. If you do want to select a firm, we can get a scope of services, and I can engage the consultants to, you know, find out, get some quotes relatively quickly. On the 11th, which would be not your next meeting, but the next bi-weekly meeting, you could meet the consultants if you wanted to and discuss the candidate profile and decide on a recruitment process. So if you want staff to select the consultant, then the process would move a little faster. If you want to interview all of the different consultants, then that's going to put a little more time into the process. The 25th, where you would approve the profile and the final process, so what, who's going to interview what, who's on the screening committee, all of that would be decided at that time, so then we could roll forward. In that time, the staff would work with the consultant to start the whole applicant material gathering process. On the 25th, the consultant would provide names for the screening committee to start conducting their interviews. That would take place around the beginning of April, April 8.
Wait, sorry. I actually created my own timeline as well. So what I thought was going to potentially happen, so I'm trying to map what you're saying to what I'm saying, so you gave different-
Gantt charts.
I love Gantt charts, you know. You know, I'm always asking for a Gantt chart.
I didn't reduce mine to that, but I will.
So I just, I'm just, since I've already thought about this, I want to see, are you more aggressive or less aggressive than I was thinking? So could you just-
This isn't a test, is it?
Could I ask you to go back? No, no. It's just very interesting, because we were very aligned in the beginning.
You were. I was thinking, I pulled mine out, I'm thinking, wait a minute.
Sorry, I should have shared this with you guys.
You didn't share the Gantt chart.
But just so you can say, like, the month and the date, because you said on the 25th. I'm trying to make sure we got, can you just-
All right, so going back to the beginning, sorry. January 22nd, which is this evening. So you make the decision as to whether or not to engage a consulting firm. Oh, thank you, I can, I'm going to make notes, too. No.
This was my first cut of thoughts, so I'm just curious how am I?
And in that also, to decide whether or not you will allow staff to kind of figure out who the consultant will be, obviously based on discussions with the chair. You're meeting on the 11th. Meet the final consultant if you choose to delegate that to staff, and then-
February 11th.
Yep, February 11th, sorry. Discuss the candidate profile, and then decide on what the entire recruitment process and timeline is going to look like. You'll also have your delegates, I'm sure, decided upon by then. On the 25th, approve the final process and the profile, so it gives a couple of weeks to talk about the profile.
Just if I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the profile, most consultants now produce a document, which basically is a marketing document for the position. Here's what the town looks like, here's why the job is good. To Mr. Zanakis's point, the internet is a wonder, and therefore, everybody will know about the job. The role really is to sell to people who aren't quite sure. It's a public process, having applied for a few positions on my own.
You seem to know an awful lot of office.
I know a little bit too much, is that sometimes a person who's really good is going, do I want to apply, because it becomes public. And sometimes you have to sort of nudge some of those folks who are really highly skilled by selling the really, and this is a great job, I agree with you, Jim, this is a phenomenal job, but sometimes you have to communicate that in some tool. And so this profile is a six, seven, eight, nine, 10-page glossy document intended to sell the benefits of taking this job now, right? In addition, I hope, is a true recruitment process and not just an administrative exercise. But that's my two cents for the day.
So finalize the press, the profile, February 25th, and finalize the profile by February 25th. Okay.
Correct.
Then you advertise.
Then we advertise, yeah.
And then about 30 days, I think, you know, I know they went 45 before. I think 30, especially now with all the electronic medium that we can put out there, 30 days should be sufficient. So that'll bring us to around the March 25th meeting, for the consultant to provide names to the Board for interviews to take place by the screening committee. And I think the screening committee is an outstanding idea. So that's around April 8. So the screening takes place over the next couple of weeks. And as part of the process, the Board also needs to decide whether there are going to be any other external stakeholders during the process in terms of department head meetings and meetings with other staff. Then looking at the timeline, around April 22nd meeting, you could interview finalists and possibly make a selection at that. And given most CEOs that are sitting in municipalities have some sort of a notice requirement in their contracts, you're looking at about a month to two months possibly for them to give their leave time. So I would say looking at late June, early July for a start.
One thing that we didn't talk about-
I would like to say we are exactly aligned.
No way.
Extremely uncanny, but we are exactly aligned. That's pretty-
That's why I pulled it out. You have a, you have a future in HR.
With Gantt chart.
With Gantt charts.
We're playing, we're playing Gantt charting.
So one of the things that hasn't been discussed, but I would really insist upon, is a really thorough background check. How long do those take?
There are two levels of those. One would be a straight Google search. In today's world, you Google everybody, but you get a package which includes that, and then a traditional background check, which is a little more significant document that may not be shared necessarily with the group, but someone will be vetting that to make sure there's not something significant in it. So you sort of have two levels. Let's see what the world says about the person, and then the more traditional, where you fill out a form. I don't think you required that last time.
But why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you be able to share that with the principal? Making the decision.
Because you've seen the Google search. Some of the other data, it just depends on the levels of you're asking for, it really depends. Like, looking at credit data, you're going to share that with the whole group. What becomes public afterwards, what doesn't become public this summer.
No, that I would agree with.
You just, I'm not trying to dissuade you from doing it, it's just, you just want to, I think what D. has identified is you have time to think about the pieces you want to make sure you have everything you need.
Can we just back up all the way to the beginning here a little bit? I think there's growing sense that a consulting firm is a good idea. Talk to us a little bit about, or maybe this is more informing the citizens here, what are the things that you're looking at as you're evaluating who's going to be our consultant here? What are the things that are driving your decision process or you're weighing? And look at the consulting firms.
Sure. I mean, I would look at what their track record is in terms of, you know, their positions that they've filled and how long people have stayed in those positions. Their experience with communities that are like North Andover. Every community has its own culture and its own way of doing things, but I think there's something to be said of another AAA bonded community about our size, and if they've done a search in that sort of an environment. What have some of the pools that they've been able to pull? I've heard some about 100 and some very small. So what's their experience in pulling qualified candidates to the community? And, and I've had the benefit of working with most of them, so I know kind of what skills and abilities they would bring to the table.
That longevity piece certainly rings true to me. I mean, you know, there's, there are great recruiters, and there are people that make decisions and haven't really thought it through enough, and then, oops, you know, flushes out. So to me, that's one of those little measures on the side I think is particularly valuable, so I'm glad you mentioned that.
And to me, that shows how much work the consultant did to get to know the community and to get to know what you want in, before they kind of dive in and get the work done.
Right. Appreciate that. Thank you.
So do you anticipate that if you were to, if a consultant was selected, that that consultant would meet individually with the Board members to get that feedback?
Absolutely. And depending on if you wanted them also to speak to senior staff, I've seen that done in the past, what senior staff is looking for in a Town Manager, in a boss. But again, the Board really drives the scope and the project. But again, the board really drives the scope and the project.
Any other discussion on?
For the reasons that you laid out, I think that Mr. Zanakis made a really good point about the non-compete. And I don't think that would have been something that we immediately thought of.
Definitely.
I think that's an example of where experience is helpful, so.
We've used it in the past, but that was a good catch to bring that forward, because that's huge.
But otherwise, I mean, the feedback from former selectmen who had to participate as the actual appointing authority was that consultants were helpful in helping bring them through the process. So I'm certainly on board with moving forward with that.
Yeah, I think, you know, again, Rosemary's point, I think to be able to hit the ground running without having to go through all the forming and everything else of a search committee. I mean, we're going to have a search committee, but having them and then having others in town that may not be as familiar with how to put this process together. You know, I think it, as you said, you know, this is one of the biggest decisions we're going to be making. And it's important to get the best resources that we can in place to help us get to that decision. So if it's going to take a consulting firm to help us get to that point and also the condensed timeline. So I think it's important to have someone in place and someone knowledgeable and experienced in that area.
Okay, so it sounds like we've had all the discussion we need to have. I'll entertain a motion.
The motion is, do you want one and what the process is to select them?
Okay, so we didn't really talk on that as much. I mean, the process to select one, Ms. Casey described that she could put together a scope of services. I mean, I think we would all want to provide some input to that in terms of, well, I guess qualifications anyway, of what we would hope to have. Do we want to interview the candidates?
I think it's helpful for us to be able to ask. And I always find that I feed off of my colleagues' questions that perhaps I wasn't necessarily thinking of.
So I guess the question is, would we like her to draft a scope of services and provide it to us for our review? And we can give feedback to that scope of services? Does that make, make sense in terms of getting the document out? And then we'll get the responses, we will review them and then let's just assume that all the big four that she mentioned and possibly others respond. How do we want to narrow that down?
Well, I, I wouldn't want to, you know, slow the process down at all. So if, if there's a scope of services that has to be drafted, then we have to review that and come back together and vote on that scope of services. And I think it would be wise for us to review them, so we know, understand what's being asked for when, so when we get the, when we get the RFPs back, we know what was asked for and what was being answered. So, but I just want to make sure that we can do it in an expedient manner, not to delay, you know, not the whole, the whole process up. So, you know, if we have to have a special meeting to come together again, I mean, I'd be willing to do that.
So my, my timeline was a bit more detailed, so maybe we can ask Dee if this is possible. I was, I was wondering if we could create the scope of services this week, remainder of this week. In our meeting Monday, because we already have a meeting scheduled for the 28th, we can provide any feedback to Dee. So she would have sent it to us by Friday and we'll review it over the weekend, have our thoughts. And then she could finalize it Monday to be able to send it out. And then, you know, Monday afternoon, let's say. And then hopefully people would be prepared to respond, ideally by the end of the week. I don't know, leaving them only four days is enough time, but.
Does that help along to your timeline?
Yeah.
Speaking for Dee, Dee can get that prepared, the scope of services?
Still the boss.
Still, hey.
You're allowed.
I'm only looking for a boss, but while I'm here, I figure I'll fill the gap. I think that you'll be prepared for the agenda, so if you wanted to approve the scope of services. And then Dee obviously would communicate with the consultants who identified and whoever else. What you need to understand, in order to get close to time, I still think you're weak aggressive on the top line personally, but generally speaking, you're not too far off. Then what you probably should try to do is if, the question is, do you want to meet the three or four who respond? Because they're all going to respond.
Right.
Right? If you want to, then you want to get those responses back and have Dee communicate with the three or four that they should be available at the February 11th meeting.
Right.
Because otherwise, you got a holiday the following week.
Yeah.
Everything gets really choppy in terms of meeting people's schedules. So the question would be on February 11th, are you prepared to have Dee come back and say, I picked group A and here's why? Or do you want to meet the four groups? And I'd still recommend that at that meeting, even if you meet them after they leave, be willing to pick one of them. So you don't want to really leave the February 11th meeting to get close to this without having selected the group.
Well, just to say, we did, this was my first proposal for our discussion. But as we can see, I mean, the whole reason I did it was to see, even, I agree this is aggressive, we're still not going to have a town manager. But, you know, depending on the notice that person has to give until after town meeting, you know.
Correct.
So.
Can I ask a question, are we going to be bound by any recruitment laws? I mean, do we have to take a little bidder, do we have to?
Yeah, depends on who you ask, if this relates to this field. Most folks say no, but the Collins Center folks will say yes, because they're, they're not covered by it, but because they're a state agency. But most often, it's considered consulting services and depends on how it's crafted. So you're going to create a scope, the scope will be similar across the board and you're going to get quotes for that scope. And so because you're getting quotes for the scope of services and other scope is the same, you've, you've satisfied, in my opinion, the procurement rules for that. Because you will have the threshold for getting quotes, you'll be under the threshold for getting quotes. And so you're asking more than three groups. All you need to do is ask three groups to comply to the same scope. And it doesn't matter if only one complies, because you will have given it to more than, you'll give it to at least three. So you're fine on that. They'll be, they'll have, have to have a contract, but other than that, you're fine. It won't be a bid, is the answer. You'll be able to evaluate their response to your scope. Yep.
So, so really, the question is, do we get the scope together and let Megan make the decision? Dee, I'm sorry, make the decision on who we go with? Or do we, as selectmen, drive that decision and make that directly ourselves? That's really kind of the, the trade-off, and there's time trade-off with that, right? Those are the two.
Experience with each one of the groups is, is very helpful, but I think, you know, I would like to be part of that selection.
Yep.
I agree, yeah. Okay, so it sounds like, do you have any additional thoughts, Rosemary?
No, I, I was in agreement with that.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought, I was trying to make sure.
She's done a fabulous job so far, but I think we're the executive board and that this is one of our big responsibilities.
So I think we'll, we'll certainly ask, you know, we'll get input from Dee through the process. But I think it sounds like we all would like to talk to the, those that respond. So we will plan on in our February 11th meeting interviewing these candidates.
But on the flip side, I don't want to talk.
We don't want all of them, right, so maybe we, maybe we give Dee some criteria and she can narrow it down to the three best, best meet our criteria. And we'll say we'll meet three in the meeting on the 11th, does that seem reasonable?
And I can absolutely make them aware that February 11th is the day. And so that needs to go into their consideration as well if they can be here.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so can we amend the motion? I think someone made a motion. Was there a motion made? No, okay.
So I'll make a motion.
Okay, good.
Would the Board of Selectmen authorize Denise Casey to obtain proposals from three to five municipal management recruitment firms? Actually, do we want to put an upper bound on that? Or do we just want to say proposals from municipal recruitment firms and then narrow that down to three to five? At least, yes, oh, that's a good point. Obtained proposals from at least three municipal management recruitment firms.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay. Do we need to make a second motion to talk about the process that we just described? Or we feel that we're fine in terms of the interviewing? Okay. Okay, next item is to vote on an appointment of an acting town manager. So per Town Charter, Chapter 4, Section 11-1, the Board of Selectmen shall designate within 10 days a town employee or other person to exercise the rights and perform the duties of town manager during any vacancy caused by the temporary absence or suspension, removal, resignation, or death of the town manager. The appointment shall be for a period not to exceed 90 days. And it may be renewed in the case of suspension, removal, resignation, or death only once for an additional period not to exceed 90 days. The appointee shall be ineligible for appointment as town manager. So I will open that up for discussion.
So yeah, I mean, the question that would pop in mind right away is, a person to exercise the rights and perform the duties of the town manager. So in an interim basis, I mean, those duties can be pretty extensive with respect to hiring and possibly firing of people. You know, I'm, I think of the term of, you know, I was thinking of a term and I lost it. Limited power of attorney, you know, or maybe some kind of a limited power of town manager. Is that something that we can consider? So no, it's either all or nothing? Okay, so that's, so that has to be per the charter. So an interim town manager, there's no provisions in the charter that says this person for 90 days has this limited scope of responsibilities. It's a full gambit, okay?
I think that we have two really capable assistants, our assistant town manager, our deputy town manager. I imagine that they'd want the flexibility to be able to apply for this position now that it's open. And because of the restrictions on applicants not being able to serve as interims, I think it's, I think it's important to look internally. I think that, as we've discussed at length, this process is going to overlap quite a bit with town meeting. And I think that we want someone especially who's able to usher the budget through especially. And so I think our finance director, Lynn Savage, would be an excellent person to put in this role. I think she gets the benefit of not just a great deal of institutional knowledge, but I think that we've all seen that she has a phenomenal grasp of the numbers and a strong working relationship with the rest of the executive team. And so I would, I would motion that we appoint Finance Director Lynn Savage, assuming she were to accept the role of interim town manager.
I had the exact same thoughts and I think we discussed it in one of our executive session meetings. And I thought she would be a fantastic interim for this particular situation, so.
Would you be willing for a friendly?
She seconded. Sorry, Laura didn't hear.
Oh, I was going to say, would you be willing to a friendly amendment to say for a period of not to exceed 90 days to your motion?
So the charter has a limit to 90 days, but allows for one extension of a 90-day period?
I assume if we approach that, we'll have to reappoint anyways?
Yes.
So I guess I would allow it, just be, yes, yes, I would certainly, I would certainly allow it, but.
Because according to this chart, you're going to be nowhere near to 90 days. So you're likely going to have to extend that provision based upon this chart.
It's on the chart, it's on the paper.
So for the, but your, your friendly amendment doesn't limit not reappointing?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, that's, just want to be clear on that.
The disappointment.
But if it makes you feel comfortable, I would second, I would second that friendly amendment, or accept that.
Can I add one, just want to, again, a friendly suggestion? I think it's a great choice, by the way. That this likely to be, would be logical to have some level of compensation change, given the responsibility. And that you authorize the chairman to have a conversation with Ms. Savage. In addition to offering of the position, because she's not here, that there'll be some discussion about whether the compensation would be different. That'll be between the board or the chairman. I wouldn't expect anything crazy, but it would be commonplace that if someone's serving in the full role, there's going to be some, well, what the public safety folks would call out of grade pay.
So assuming it gets accepted, can we, can we do that as a separate motion, only because?
Whatever you'd like.
If it, if it's rejected and we have to go outside of town, I would assume we'd have to compensate anyone anyways.
Yes, you would.
So I suppose we should give the chairwoman, I would be inclined to give the chairwoman that authority regardless. Again, this is all assuming that Ms. Savage accepts and, you know, she's not here to accept. Hopefully she's watching at home.
That would have been presumptuous.
Yes, it would be.
Before we vote, I would just like to say that I think that Ms. Savage would be a great choice. She's, I think, probably the longest tenured person left in town hall at this point. And has extensive knowledge, obviously, of our budget, which is probably one of the most important things.
Especially at this time of year.
At this time of year, yeah. And obviously, we have a great assistant and deputy town manager to support her. So I think that would be a great choice. Any other discussion or comments on Ms. Savage before we move to vote? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Madam Chair.
Motion passes.
I would make a motion as a follow-up to give you the authority to negotiate any additional compensation, should Ms. Savage accept the role of interim town manager.
But we do, but we do have time for you to bring it back for us to discuss the amount. I guess I'd like to have some kind of parameters, knowing what you're, you're going to be doing.
So you're authorizing, the motion is to authorize me to discuss with her. I can bring it back in our meeting on the 28th to vote on the amount.
Except that, that's an important piece of language to include in the initial motion. I'd accept that amendment.
We have a meeting on the 28th.
Yeah.
So pending approval of the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion pa, any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, and the last item on our agenda is to vote on the makeup of the search committee. So per Town Charter, Chapter 4, Section 1-2, the Board of Selectmen shall appoint a search committee of at least three people, not to include any member of the Board of Selectmen, for the purpose of recommending candidates for the position of town manager. I will open the discussion by giving my proposal, which is that we would each appoint one person to a search committee, as has been done in the past to hiring some town managers.
I would agree with that, with the same conditions that previous boards did, that, that we, we pick, as Mr. Zanakis said, from people, sort of an arms-length choice. That, I think it's just probably that, just to keep.
I think.
Yeah, I think that's hard to say.
I would argue that I think that we legally, I think we should give each of us the authority to pick whoever we want. And frankly, I mean, I, I think to intentionally exclude anybody who serves on another board defeats the whole culture of what we've established as a community, whereas we all work together. And if we're so inclined on our own to pick somebody that's on another board, doesn't that say a lot about the relationships that we have with our colleagues in government?
Can I clarify the past practice? Is that okay to do?
Sure.
The past practice was that no other elected officials or, when I said appointed officials, it wasn't really, other boards, I think, is acceptable. But anyone that has a vested interest in the outcome of this search. But, you know, employees specifically that have a vested interest in working with the town manager in the future for their own job, for example, that would be the trick. I don't think it was the intention to convey that it was anyone that serves on a board. But certainly, you know, that has to be weighed carefully.
Okay, thank you.
You said it better.
And also.
I already knew what we did.
It's, it does end up.
I certainly don't want to insult anybody, it's sort of a difficult conversation to have.
It does end up being a reflection on the individual, you know, whoever you select is going to be a reflection on you. So it's in, obviously, your best interest to do what's right for the town and not appoint someone who might be perceived, because it's not even, if anyone has any experience with the ethics commission, it's not the conflict, it's the appearance of conflict. So it would reflect poorly for anyone to select someone who might appear to have business with the town of North Andover, where selecting the town manager would be a perception of conflict.
Yeah.
Absolutely agree.
Agree with that. Thank you for the clarification. I still think that as amendment to, well, did we make a motion? No. I mean, I, I agree, it should, we should take those points into account. I, I guess I think anyone's def, to say an arms-length person, everyone would have a different definition of what arms-length is. So I guess as long as we feel like we all have a common understanding of what we're talking about, that's fine.
I think you clarified what I was trying to say.
Yeah, okay.
I guess I would add one other thing too, which is that as, we're also defining in this process, really, who those discussions can be with potentially. And so it's not necessarily only our designees or the subcommittee that may be talking to this individual. I foresee there may be opportunities for other people potentially in that. We haven't talked about this, but that's certainly also part of the process. So we haven't really defined that yet. And so that's part of the challenge of choosing the right representative, since we don't really know what that process is going to be, right? Who, who else is going to have input? Who else will be? Who else will be part of the interview process formally or informally? That, I think, puts a little more weight on us really trying to figure out who can best represent what we see as the vision for helping to make this narrow-down choice. So I wouldn't want that narrow, I wouldn't want that restricted in any way other than a straight conflict of interest, I think, to start off with. I'm just saying, keeping it as broad as possible, because we don't know who else is going to be involved going on, going into this discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think it should be a town employee, certainly, and I don't think it should be a person who obviously has a conflict of interest, because they do business with the town, other than that. I agree it should be who we think will represent our, our interest.
Trust yourselves. Give yourselves a broad latitude and trust yourselves.
So perhaps to incorporate that language, a motion would be to form a subcommittee made up of five members, with each selectman to appoint their own representative to this five-member committee, with individuals who would, with whom the town manager would either have direct or indirect supervision over professionally, being excluded from consideration to membership.
You're into boards now.
Excuse me?
You're into boards, I just.
Professionally.
Professional, okay. Well, because I appoint boards.
You do, but professionally, there's no, there's no compensation on your part?
There's my own take, just give yourself, you go, oh, pick a member. I mean, trust yourselves, right? You're not going to do something crazy, it's not, I don't see that in the group, and quite frankly, you live with the result of who you appoint.
And to the point, right, it's a reflection on us.
Just give yourself the credit of appoint someone that you want to pick on the board, just trust yourselves, which is what you wanted originally. You just, every selectman picks a member and trust yourself to pick the right person, and if someone.
If we feel like that additional language is unnecessary, I would withdraw my motion and re-mage it.
Pick someone.
I mean, then I would motion then that we, we as a board form a five-member subcommittee to search, with each of us having discretion to appoint one member to represent our interest on that, our perspective on that subcommittee.
Second.
Any further discussion?
And when is the timeframe for that to be happening?
The next meeting.
28th?
That's what I think. That's my proposal, I guess.
Okay, I'm good with that.
But I'm, I'm being aggressive.
Hold it in until I saw it.
Okay, we don't, we could, we could push it, because they don't need to do.
Well, actually, what we're discussing, so professionally, Denise, do you think, based on the timeline that you gave us before, it doesn't sound like we'd actually be using this, this search committee until mid-March anyways, because, you know, we're all the way at the end of Sept, all the way at the end of February before we start finalizing the profile for our community and doing that, so in theory, I mean, there's not this urgency to appoint that particular subcommittee.
That is true.
By the next meeting, although I think it would probably be helpful to involve them in the process of a.
In my recommendations, I said, you know, probably if, at least if you have them by the 25th, you'll know the makeup of, February, thank you. You'll know the makeup of the committee, and then you'll need to, you know, kind of look at what their strengths are, and if there's any other questions or anything that, you know, you want the consultant to hone in on, but that will help instruct the remainder of the process, if that makes sense.
So would you not see the consultant interviewing the committee members as part of the, creating the town and position profile? That would really just be us and staff?
That's what I would recommend, but, again, it's your decision.
Because that's the only reason to rush to appoint them, is if they were going to participate in that process, which, okay.
The only thing I would, just kind of run out the discussion here, is that the sooner you can get people engaged, I mean, if we've got, if we've got a good candidate, the sooner they get engaged, you can sync up your Gantt charts, but more importantly, the communication starts to flow, right? And sort of the, the labor that's involved, so, you know, if each one of us feels comfortable that we've got one or two people that we could reach out to, then I'd be all for shooting for, for Monday.
Well, you could poll the board to say, do you have your, do you have a candidate and have they agreed?
Just for the sake, just for the sake of conversation. The 11th gets you 20 days. It doesn't put anybody rush, if you decide you want to speak to more and more people, the weekend comes pretty quick. Just make it the 11th. Like, don't, again, don't, just make it the 11th.
I think we, I think we can do it, and that's why I, that Regina could just be, is everybody ready?
If someone comes early, you can put her on your agenda for your own pick, but make it the 11th.
So not the Monday, Monday's meeting is the 28th, so it'll be, give us two more weeks after this Monday, so February 11th. I think that's fine as well, looking at the schedule we talked about, so.
Really fast.
I just don't think, but having a board like that or a committee sat or selected, if there's no consulting, there's really nothing for them to, there's no expedience to do that before that committee, before the consultant is selected, because there's really nothing for them to do. And truthfully, I would like to be able to socialize the timeline with the person that I was thinking of to make sure that it aligns, so.
I agree with that, and aside from that, there's nothing, if you, if you socialize it and the person says they're going to do it, then you can start talking to them about what you, what your thoughts are, and, I mean, there's nothing preventing you from talking to them, it's just they're not appointed and they won't be talking to each other until they're appointed, but.
Is it advantageous of knowing the consultant? And as you talk to the consultant about the profile, knowing who your person is, then you're going to let them go, because they're supposed to be doing the work of the committee and disassociating with the board. So the 11th to the 25th are most practical. It seems to me that the 11th is the most logical date. It gives you time, gives you ability to communicate, it just seems logical, but, again, it's your call, but it seems like a logical date.
Okay, so are you going to amend that motion to?
So it keeps on amending as well.
Yeah, I guess we don't have to, we just.
The motion, the motion can stand, and you can just choose to put on the agenda for the 11th. I mean, that's.
Okay, sounds good. So, did we get a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Wonderful. I believe that concludes our agenda.